2011, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have translation tonight with Vivian Rodriguez.
Si, muy buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para el audífono. Gracias. Gracias a usted también. Okay, we also have headsets available for anybody who needs assistance with hearing, and if you would just let us know, we can provide those for you, as noted on the screen. And I'd like to start by welcoming, we have quite a gallery of students, and if you had the chance to see some of the displays in the other room, they were quite interesting and very scholarly. And Dr. Sarves is going to introduce our students and talk a little bit about the presentations that we've just seen.
Well, we did take a look at some wonderful projects, and we talked to some outstanding students, and their teachers, and their parents, just in the next room. And we're going to ask the students to be a little slow about taking their projects home, just in case other people who are from the public want to take a look, or members of the press want to take a look, with cameras. I would like our students to come forward as I recognize them. We had a number of, we have just outstanding projects in the next room. The board was able to go through the projects and talk to students about them. We had 24 of our students who participated in the California State Science Fair, and some of them even won prizes at the state level. I'd like our students to come forward. I'd like to just introduce you by name, and just list the name of your project. Diana Pasternak, would you please come first? There she is. Diana's science project was, Diana, why don't you stand here on the camera side? Good. Her science project was an evaluation of monoclonal antibodies for a gene called HER2NUE, do I have that right, HER2NUE, status in breast cancer. And you saw that project right here on the corner. And Mark Raphael. Mark's project was the leading causes of lung cancer in non-smokers. Oh, by the way, both of these students are from Locolina Junior High School, and I saw David Ortiz right here from Locolina Junior High School. And we have Jack Ryan, the science of blood splatter analysis. Interesting project, Jack? And Leanne Sturgeon, plaque preference, effect of sucrose, honey, and sucralose on growth of streptococcus mutants. And Ami Thacker, Thacker, Thackerar? Oh, I have to put another syllable in there. Picture this, the effect of illustrations on reading comprehension. Thank you, Ami. And did I miss any students from Locolina Junior High School? Well, Locolina students, move on over. We're going to add students from Galida Valley with Michael Alling, Plants and Their Environment. Michael, didn't you have a subtitle on that?
Uh, yeah.
What was it?
Uh, study on the ability of plants to survive.
Study on the what, plants to survive?
The ability of plants to survive.
The ability, okay. I thought you were naming a plant that I wasn't going to be able to name. It's always a problem. Thank you. And Jessica Brest, on how pH effects steel. Jessica? Ethan Brier, how to maximize the ability of solar thermal fluid heater. And you saw the heater in the next room. Does it work?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, it does. I caught that. Caught that from your graph. Zachary Frandato, the effect of lift on angle of attack. And Elizabeth Nevins, reactions based on Robert Pluchek's Wheel of Emotions. And Tony Olivero, induced hearing loss, a silent crisis in teens on junior high schools' students' iPod use. And let's see, I think I've got all of the Galida Valley students here. Did Devin Anibal come in? Talia Cohen? Timothy Heideck? Karina Shipper? Or Margot Schraman? Okay, I'm glad we got them all. And to this group, we're going to add Santa Barbara Junior High students. Did Kaylee Boyd make it? Kaylee, great. Where were you?
Writing.
You're writing. Oh, there we go. All right. There are always too many activities. We really appreciate your being here with us tonight. The effect of plant density on plant growth. And let's see, other junior high students from Santa Barbara Junior High, Julia Castleberg or Mira Tubiolo? No? Well, from San Marcos High School, we had a joint project from Sofia Lochner, Sofia's here, and Carolyn Vance, how do various electrolytes, polyatomic, monoatomic, affect, monatomic, excuse me, affect the efficiency of algae-based batteries? And your partner put that together with you, right?
Yeah, she's not given it.
All right. Have I missed any students? It's always the big fear. All right, students, congratulations. You put wonderful effort into your projects, and I'm sure the board will have some words for you as well.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to applaud all of you on the... Your topics were so interesting, I felt like I wished that I could just stand there and listen to a lecture by each one of you to talk about the various issues that you were undertaking to research in your projects. They were so in-depth, and topics that I would not ever have considered. And some of them are so significant in terms of the public health as well. So, very nice. And I just want to remind you that on Saturday, at 5:30 on Channel 18, is it 5:30? I always say 5:30.
Five o'clock.
I think it's five o'clock. Saturday at 5:00 on Channel 18, our meetings are televised, so you can see yourselves if you want to watch it. But I also want to take a few minutes to say that, in addition to all of your hard work, which I know you spent numerous hours working very hard on your projects, but I know that there were also a lot of other people who probably supported you, both your teachers, and the staff at your schools, and your parents, and other family members. So I'd like to acknowledge them as well. So, parents, family members, teachers, administrators, we also thank you for the work that you do with our students.
Students. You know, Ms. Cordero, a number of our students got state awards, and we couldn't keep track of them all on paper. If you got a state award, would you put your hand up, please? And some of those awards were significant.
Well, congratulations, and we know we have some of the greatest students in the world in our district, so we applaud you, and I know you'll go on to high school and college and do more great things. So, thank you very much.
All right. Well, I'd like to lead you right into the next part of presentations, which is our student report. We have Anya Arroyo and Diego Tapia, our student representatives from La Cuesta and Alta Vista. Anya and Diego are going to update us on what is happening at their schools.
Hi, my name is Diego Tapia, and I'm a student at La Cuesta, and I will be graduating in June. Probably our best news of this year is that we were WASC accredited in February. The staff worked very hard to fill out the application, and we had someone come and observe us for a day. We passed and are now accredited. Alta Vista also applied, and we're waiting to hear the results. I am a member of the Leadership Club on campus, where we meet every Tuesday at lunch. We have organized many activities. We had have pumpkin carving contests and a Halloween costume contest. Students also competed in building gingerbread houses during our lunch period, period before winter break. We were also involved in the canned food drive for the food bank, collected shoes for Souls for Souls, which were then sent to earthquake and tsunami victims in Japan. And are still collecting canned flip tops to give to the Red Cross to return in for money transfusions. We organized a fundraiser selling pastries to earn money so that seniors can go to grad night, which takes place at Disneyland with other high schools, to have fun for the last night of high school. This is also the first time that La Cuesta is attending, and we also earned enough money for the bus. All of us graduating seniors are really excited to attend. Tina from Santa Barbara Art Museum has continued to teach us art, and we have gone to visit the Museum of Art. We created and sold T-shirts for Dia de los Muertos, and we helped create tiles that were added to the Cota and Delavina Beautification Project. Some of our students were also involved in Project Instigator, where we created art as a mural in the funk zone. Our Out to Lunch program is still happening, with mentors taking out a student to lunch once a month. Many of the mentors are from the district office. My mentor is Brian Tanguey. He's a very outgoing person, has given me good advice, and is a nice person to be around. I am a class member of the Road Trip Nation. It is a self-exploration and discovery of where your passion is, so that you can have a career that you love and enjoy. I have found that I love cooking, and music, and reading, so I want to be a chef. I plan a major in culinary arts. We've also taken several field trips this year. We went to Build the Dinosaur at Museum of National History, Natural History, Santa Barbara City College, UCSB, and Moore Park College, where we saw the Department for Training Exotic Animals. The entire school also went to the Museum of Tolerance in Los Angeles. I found a piece of good news that La Cuesta has two Crystal Apple Awards this year. Dr. Paul Cronshaw received the Apple, the Crystal Apple for Teacher Award, and Tony Rincon for the Certificate Staff Crystal Apple. We are incredibly excited for both of them, and I would like to introduce you to Anna Arroyo.
Hi, my name is Anna Arroyo. I am a senior who will be graduating June 1st from La Cuesta. Parents enjoy coming to La Cuesta, especially to see their students get awards. Every six weeks, awards are given for that grading period. There are awards for perfect attendance, highest number of units earned, greatest improvement, and best citizenship. Parents and students are proud to receive these awards. Santa Barbara Bank and Trust has given us a grant so that two students per month can get a Student of the Month Award, along with a check for $25. Diego and I have both been Students of the Month. Three days a week, we have the opportunity to earn extra credits by coming to our credit recovery program after school. Teachers give us extra work that we complete during this time. We are then able to recover credits even faster. Our Friday elective program is a great way to end the week. We have this class once a week, and we choose from African drumming, gardening, crafts, culture foods, sports activities, chess, basketball at the Corea Gym, working on our yearbook for real, and the hall program. These electives give us a chance to do something fun and try something new. KEYT also did a spot on Dr. Cronshaw's Guardian class. I am in the yearbook class, which gives me an opportunity to get used to the computer, take pictures, and design pages. We are selling yearbooks now. We also are very proud of our recycling efforts. We recycle compost and have very little in the can for the landfill. Our paper goods and spoons and forks, plus any leftover food, are all compostable, and we carefully put our trash in the proper container. We are lucky to have two speakers this year right here in the boardroom. Morgan Fawcett spoke about his struggle with being born with fetal alcohol syndrome. That made me think about alcohol and how dangerous it is. And he also gave us a taste of a different culture. He is a Native American from Alaska, and brought us many of his handmade flutes and native regalia. Chris Benedict spoke to us about having cerebral palsy, and then he DJed for us at lunch. The district definitely heard us. I came away from his presentation reminded not to judge people and be careful what words you use. We started a new club on campus this semester, Gay Street Alliance. I'm proud to say I am the president. We met, we meet every Wednesday, have had guest speakers, and sponsored the Day of Silence at La Cuesta. KEYT did a spot on La Cuesta for this event. Seventy-five percent of our students participated the best they could. Being silent taught us how difficult it is to be quiet about your sexuality. Coming up, tomorrow we will be celebrating with ELAC by having a potluck with student awards at 6:30. Our senior luncheon will be May 31st, and we are happy to announce that Nutrition Services will be catering. Senior awards will be May 17 at 6:00 in this boardroom, and our graduation will be June 1st at 5:15 in the Courthouse Sunken Gardens. La Cuesta gave me a second chance to graduate early. We are a little family, and everybody gets along. The staff is here to help when we need something, or when we need help.
Thank you, Mr. Tapia and Ms. Arroyo. A very thorough presentation. We have a real appreciation for what you do at La Cuesta, and also, we just want to thank you for the poise with which you presented your information as well. So, it sounded like a very fun-filled year.
All right. Well, that concludes our presentation. Students, thank you so much for bringing us your science projects. They're wonderful. Thank you, La Cuesta and Alta Vista, for your reports.
While we love to have people remain and listen to the entire meeting, we certainly don't expect you to. So if you are, if you want to get home, want to or need to get home to do homework, et cetera, we will certainly understand if you want to leave. So, we will move on with our meeting.
(laughing) No, board members are required to stay. There's always homework, though, isn't there?
Yes.
Well, I'll go on with the superintendent's report.
Dr. Sarves, the superintendent's report?
Good, thank you. Well, graduation and promotions are just around the corner. We're only three weeks from the end of the school year, and the schedule indicating which senior award event and which high school graduation, and eighth grade promotion, each board member will attend, has been provided to the board. So, we try and distribute ourselves and then move around the district each year, so that we get to see them all over the course of a number of years. We have new state ranks and similar school ranks. I know that since this is based on testing that was done one year ago, it always seems so late. The truth is, there's hardly anyone left in Sacramento in the California Department of Education, and it actually takes them this long to produce. The API base reports that show the state ranks for each of the schools, and shows the similar school ranks for each of the schools. We've seen significant academic performance index, API growth, and improvements over the recent years. And we have board focus goals for state ranks and similar school ranks. In fact, 12 of our 20 schools have received APIs that have state ranks of five or higher, although since schools across the entire state are also improving, we saw schools that actually went up but dropped in their state rank. So, you know, staying abreast of the improvements is critically important, to keep that five or above in state rank. And we also have new similar school ranks. Schools with similar school ranks of eight or higher are McKinley School with a similar school rank of eight, Locolina Junior High with an eight, Santa Barbara Junior High with an eight, San Marcos High with an eight, Washington School with a nine, Galida Valley Junior High with a nine, and Lacumbra Junior High with a 10. So, we congratulate each of these schools, and students, staff, and parents are to be commended for their focus on achievement at each of these schools. Last week, San Marcos High School teacher, Desa Mandarino, was selected as the 2012 Santa Barbara County Teacher of the Year. Desa was selected because of her knowledge of the major issues challenging educators, and her contributions and commitment to furthering the professionalism of all teachers. If you've been in Desa Mandarino's class, it's a very active place to be. She doesn't believe in passive learning. She is active. Students are on the go. She presents them with game-like situations that are connected with real issues in life, in modern life. She's an English teacher who has just a tremendous heart and enthusiasm for what she does. We plan to invite Desa to a future board meeting, so that you'll be able to meet her and be able to hear some of that enthusiasm directly from her. Last week, Dos Pueblos High School students going to the National Science Bowl. Mike Feldman, Daniel Gay, Andy Granatelli, team captain, Ellen Goodman, I believe that's Ellen, if I get it wrong, then someone can correct me. And coach, Chris Jones, returned from the 2011 National Science Bowl in Washington, DC. It was quite an event. The students won once in four rounds of the event, which is sponsored by the U.S. Department of Energy to encourage students to pursue careers in math and science, at the recommendation of their competitors. The Dos Pueblos team won the Civility Award Trophy. Daniel was quoted as saying, "To win the Civility Award, you have to support everyone, and they have to support you." To me, that's perhaps what Science Bowl is really about, showing that people have to work as a team in order to succeed, and that's a great life lesson. The Board Brief. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. It is a collection of articles and informational items on school and district matters, and a copy of the April 15 Board Brief is on display in the reception area. The board saw a report in the Board Brief, the last Board Brief, on 1,500 of our high school students who are enrolled in Santa Barbara City College courses and dual enrollment courses. We also saw a report on Ventura Unified School District regarding furlough days. In Ventura Unified, they're taking 10 furlough days, and even reducing the school year by five days to 175 days instead of 180. Coming up, the district's 145th anniversary celebration will take place this Thursday, May 12, that's just two days from now, across the street at the Historical Society, 3:00 to 4:30. The community event will be a wonderful showcase of student talent and glimpse into our district's past. Invitations are located in the back of the room. The All ELAC recognition of English Learner Students, ELAC standing for English Learner Advisory Committee, will take place next Wednesday, May 18, at McKinley Elementary School. Univision's Blanca Figueroa and board member Monique Limone will be guest speakers. This is a potluck event coordinated largely by teacher-on-special assignment Katia Rodriguez-Mester and Sal Garania from Padres Unidos. And the 2011 Teachers Network Education Celebration will take place on May 19 in Buellton. A number of us are among the South County recipients. As the students just said, we have Paul Cronshaw, Dr. Cronshaw is a La Cuesta High School teacher who's being recognized as the South County Crystal Apple Secondary Teacher, also from La Cuesta. We have classified employee recipient Tony Rincon, another member of the La Cuesta High School team. We also have Janice Conley, a speech and language pathologist at Adams School, as the certificated support provider. This week, the following events will take place. We have at Galida Valley Junior High School, the Talent Show, which is tomorrow. I know, we have a lot of events here. San Marcos High School's spring musical, Me and My Girl, has been running this past weekend, and again this next weekend, with performances this Thursday through Saturday. La Cuesta Junior High School presents a musical, Hairspray, beginning on May 12. And a complete list of events and performances is available on Dave, the district's website. Chris, the district's website, right there, so that people can take a look. Oh, you're right, it is Lacumbra Junior High School, not La Cuesta Junior High School. La Cuesta is the continuation school that's right next door here. This is the Lacumbra Junior High School presentation of the musical, Hairspray, beginning on May 12. Thank you.
So, that concludes the superintendent's report. We will move on to board comments and correspondence. Are there comments from board members? Ms. Parker?
I'll just be really quick, because we obviously have a lot to do this evening. But I did want to follow up on the master schedule report that we were to get in a board brief, but we still haven't gotten a board brief. So, I'm hoping that it can come out in this Friday, if there's going to be a board brief on Friday. And I also wanted to let members of the public know that, like my colleague, Mr. Heron, I'm trying to move into the digital world, so this is going to be opening shortly, and hopefully moving away from this and just focusing on this in the future.
Mr. Heron?
Thank you. Real quick, I was very happy to coordinate 50 of our high school students to attend the UCSB Economic Forecast Project this past week. We had three great speakers, one great writer on Too Big to Fail, and one of the Federal Reserve Board Presidents, and our local UCSB Director of our economic project, and Chair of the Economic Department of UCSB. So, we had 10 from each high school attend that meeting, and I think they thoroughly enjoyed it. I did attend a Just Communities Seminar on creating effective multilingual environments, the interpretation and translation, and I found it very, very interesting and useful. And right here, for our own interpretation, when we have people up at the podium, it's sometimes in translation, you lose what the meaning of what it is. You don't feel the heart coming out of the person. So, trying to train people on how to be good interpreters, and I thought it was very worthwhile. I did have the opportunity to spend quite a bit of the day with State Superintendent of Education, Tom Torleksen. We had a Partners in Education breakfast, where he was the main speaker, and I sat next to him. Following that, we had a roundtable discussion with a group of community leaders. And then later in the afternoon, we had a technology showcase, and he spoke at all three of those events. And I think he left Santa Barbara thinking we're pretty darn good. I mean, that's just the impression I got of all the things that we do. Wendy Murbad from Adams, she's a PTA President, she presented at the technology showcase, and she demonstrated the school's website for Adams School. And fairly inexpensive site to put together. It did take a dedicated person to do it, but it's, take a look at the Adams School website. It is very, very good, and used very well by the Adams School environment. So, some very good things. And Lacumbra Foundation had a great event honoring your Aunt Karen's, Karen's, and I think they raised probably a lot of money at the event. So, it was a busy couple weeks.
Okay, any other board members? Ms. Limone?
Well, board member Deacon and I had the opportunity to spend some time at San Marcos, and we attended the ELD Celebration End of the Year Gathering, and it was really exciting to see so much of what the students are doing. There's some amazing student groups. They've brought in community members to join some of their music groups, and so that was very exciting. And the students, it was quite a packed cafeteria that night. And shortly after, we went and saw, we walked right over and saw Me and My Girl, and wow, what a performance was that. So, we had a very packed night, but very much enjoyed it, and major thanks to all the folks at San Marcos that make really good things happen. So, thank you.
Ms. Deacon?
And Ms. Limone made a really inspiring address to the students at the ELD Awards, so I just want to thank her for that, because she did a terrific job. And to those San Marcos fans out there, I now have, doing the Lambert Walk on my iPod, but I'm promised not to play at over 60% of volume, because as we learned from our science experiments, that could really harm my long-term hearing, so I don't want to do that. I'd also just like to talk briefly about the Dos Pueblos Senior Honors awards. I'd also just like to talk briefly about the Dos Pueblos Senior Honors Award Ceremony that I went to the other night, and Mr. Behrens was there from San Marcos, and John Beckio was there from Santa Barbara, from Santa Barbara Junior, soon to be Santa Barbara High. But I was thinking, as we were looking at these science students here, what they're going to look like in four years, because we heard all the terrific things that these students have done in their four years in high school, and I know that's true of the other two high schools as well. So many young women were getting awards in science, math, technology, engineering. So many of our students are going to top tier colleges, and the young men are doing equally well, but I know for a long time, women haven't been as well represented in the sciences. And so it was really encouraging to see how many of them are going to go on a major in molecular biology and mechanical engineering and bioengineering. And so it was really exciting, and so I know that the students that we saw just a few minutes ago have a lot of exciting things ahead for them.
Great. Okay, and I just wanted to mention a couple of things. One is that we have, I have been serving on the County Committee for District Organization in the County of Santa Barbara for school districts. We have been meeting, it seems like every night, with public hearings. I think we've had so, four so far, for our unification, well, actually, one was not for our district, but three so far for our district, for our unification petition. And we have another one coming up on May 19, which we hope will be our final meeting, at which we'll determine whether our unification will be approved or not. So we are optimistic that it will soon be official, and we look forward to hopefully having six and a half, maybe? Maybe six million dollars that would come to the district? Yeah. If that should be approved. So that will help put a big dent in our $10 million deficit that we are facing. So that's very exciting. And then I did want to mention that Dr. Sarves is also a recipient of the Crystal Apple Award, and is very modest and did not mention himself in presenting that. So that is something that I think we will, are very proud of as well, as well. Dr. Sarves and Virgil Elings will be receiving the Hope Award on May 14. Is it 14? 14? This coming Saturday, from the Education Foundation, in recognition of all the work that he has done on behalf of students in the district and the work that Dr., that Virgil Elings has done in his magnanimous contributions to our schools. So congratulations, Dr. Sarves, and we have some really exciting things going on.
Ms. Cordero?
Yes?
Perhaps we should clarify. When you use the word unification, you know, people wonder sometimes, and I know we've been talking about this for months here, but we have members of the public who may not have been in our previous meetings and may not tune in on Saturday nights to watch the meetings.
I can't imagine.
I don't know why. I can't imagine. But this is a unification of the elementary district and the secondary district. It's a Thompson unification. It doesn't involve the other feeder elementary districts, so it would not involve Galita Union, it would not involve the Hope District, nor Cold Spring, nor the Montecito Union District. In fact, they've all by resolution opted out of that. They don't want to be part of that unification. Our district is operated under common administration for years and years. We've had one board, we've had one administrative organization here for the district. We have a single salary schedule for the districts, for the elementary and the secondary district. And about five years ago, we became a single resolution district, so that we're operating as if we are one district, with the exception of certain fiscal matters. And this allows us to continue to operate as one district, as a unified elementary and secondary district. So it's not really much of a change, but there are huge advantages to us, the least of which is the one you just described, which is a major influx of revenue from the state, which is an incentive that the state establishes for districts that are unified. And, you know, the state's gone from about 2,000 districts down to about 1,000 districts by offering incentives like this, and it took a long time for us to bite, but it's worth it to us now. So we're anxious to achieve that status.
Thank you for that clarification. It is a kind of a complex issue, and especially given that we've operated as close to a unified district as possible for basically the entire lifetime of the district. So thank you. Okay, we will move on to item C3, Announcement of Closed Session Action. We have no action to report out from our closed session, so we will move on to public comments. And at this time, the public will be invited to speak on any items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the jurisdiction of the school board.
We have five speakers on public comment this evening. The first is Laura Pomerantz, followed by Denise Shelley, followed by Amy Sax-Savarin.
At this time, we will close public comments, so if you were waiting to speak, you can bring your speaker slip up now, but then it will be closed. Okay, saying done, we will close public comment.
Good evening. It's good to see all of you again. My name is Laura Carlos Pomerantz, President of PEPs, Parents for Excellence in Public Schools. Before I speak tonight, I just wanted to quickly ask for a quick show of hands for those parents that are here tonight on behalf of this issue, sixth-grade GATE, and have concerns about it. Excellent. Thank you so much. On behalf of PEPs, I would like to ask the school board to address a very longstanding program that, problem, I'm sorry, that has affected the sixth-grade GATE magnet class at Washington School. It is a problem which also affects other hard-to-fill teaching positions throughout the district. Every year, for the past 11 years, there has been a different teacher in the sixth-grade Washington GATE class. Many times, the allocation of teacher positions has placed a tenured teacher in this difficult-to-fill position, where they did not want to teach the GATE class. Other times, highly motivated but untenured teachers who have loved teaching GATE were given pink slips. Last year, this problem reached a crescendo as the class began without any teacher. Three temporary teachers came to teach over the first three weeks of school until a tenured teacher was placed in the spot. Unfortunately, she did not want to teach the class and left in the middle of the school year. Finally, two part-time teachers managed to limp the class along for the rest of the year, but the year was lost educationally, and over one-third of the class left by school's mid-year. This year, we currently have a wonderful teacher. She's really well-respected, and she's applauded by administrators, teachers, parents, and students alike. Unfortunately, we are seeing history repeated, as she was given a pink slip. So the sixth-grade GATE is a very unique and particularly hard-to-fill position. Finding a good, longstanding match for this spot has proved elusive over the last decade. A particular desire for the teacher who teaches GATE is required. A proficiency with materials beyond the K through eight teaching credential is vital for the success of its program, as many students in this class typically need to be engaged at this level. Creative solutions which better serve the students must be possible for GATE and other hard-to-fill positions which have unique and atypical needs. Solutions which better match teacher to the classroom. PEPs would like to take this opportunity to ask the board to direct staff to seek creative solutions for this decade-long problem before our new academic year starts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Denise Shelley? Dennis Shelley, followed by Amy Sax-Savarin.
Thank you. My name is Dennis Shelley. I'm here speaking on my own behalf and on the behalf of the family that I spoke to you once before on. I spoke to you a few weeks ago about a security guard who was constantly bullying a number of students on one of your high school campuses. Today, I'm formally submitting the complaint about this same person. I have eight copies of this complaint for your use. Yes, I feel the security guard should be fired, as do many others, and I am confident that, once you have learned about the way she behaves towards your students, that you will feel the same way. I am also offering a variety of solutions to help you to prevent this sort of situation from occurring in the future. In a separate section of this complaint, I have given you examples of other sorts of abuses and injustices that have occurred on your campuses, and I offer suggestions aimed at preventing them in the future as well. You will also find a copy of a letter to the local Child Protective Services Agency, in which I asked them to review the situation to see if the child abuse, the child abuse that has taken place is worthy of their attention. Bullying does equate to child abuse. Lastly, you will note that I talk at length about the character and the extraordinary achievement of my young friend, who was so thoughtlessly abused by the security guard. This young man did something that probably no other student has been able to achieve. When just a year and a half ago, he realized that he was a full year behind in his credits, he challenged himself to do what might, what many might consider to be an impossible task, to graduate with his class. Remember, a year and a half, a year behind in the middle of his junior year. He attended the National Guard Youth Challenge Program in San Luis Obispo, earning back half of those credits in just five and a half months. He then returned to this school, attended summer school, and then took on a class schedule that included nine classes per day. He was on many occasions on campus at 7:00 a.m. and didn't leave campus until 4:30 p.m.
30 seconds.
And he had to forego all extracurricular activities. But he told me late last week that he accomplished his goal. On June 2, he will don his cap and gown and receive his diploma. I am in absolute awe of his accomplishment, as indeed you should be, but there are no awards or special honors for what he has done. Yet I know that he is truly deserving of the highest of accolades, along with some apologies that this school system can offer him.
Thank you.
Who should I give these reports to?
Actually, Mr. Sumter right here. Ms. Cordero, we've already launched that investigation, but of course, we do want to accept the materials from Mr. Shelley.
May I make a comment? Is the name of the person in that document?
Absolutely, all information. I probably have more than enough information on myself, on that person.
I would like to comment. I think if you hand it to us, it's public information, where we have a policy that if there's a complaint against employee, it's better done in closed session, and that gives the employee, because she's not here or he's not here, to defend themselves, and you might lose, we might lose some legal possibilities, and you might lose some legal possibilities. I only suggest, before you hand that in, I'd like to have a clarification of that. Pardon? But that's, wouldn't that be public knowledge?
Do we need to have a legal clarification on that?
Well, I believe we can accept the material and we'll use it in our investigation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Amy Sax-Savarin, followed by Barbara Scharf, followed by Denise Adams.
Hello, my name is Amy Sax-Savarin. I am talking to the board members this evening about the sixth-grade GATE program at Washington School. I remember my older daughter, Madeline, was in the GATE class, the sixth-grade GATE class, in 2001, and I'm surprised that this continues 10 years later. I knew of three students in 2001 who ended up leaving the school in October that year and being homeschooled because their parents felt as if their children were not receiving the quality of education they needed. The person who was teaching that year was not enjoying their time teaching that level of class. If the situation were to continue again, once my younger daughter Caroline, Caroline, in a year and a half reaches that level, I might consider alternative methods of schooling her. I don't want to use that as a threat, and that's definitely not what my preference is. I want her in that sixth-grade graduating class, feeling very proud about accomplishing seven years at Washington School. And I'm just curious, does anyone know how much money the school may have lost in the last 11 years with the parents' participation and the money the school receives by those students leaving the school? I would like to support Washington School and the GATE program and ask the school board to find a solution. It's really sad that politics and policy are deciding the educational destiny of our children. The best interests of the children should trump all decisions, political or not. Can you please find a solution to this long-term problem? Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Scharf, followed by Denise Adams.
Hi, I'm Barbara Scharf, and I'm a parent of two students at Washington School, and I'm here to also discuss the sixth-grade GATE teacher problem. 11 teachers in 11 years for the sixth-grade GATE class at Washington School. Here is an example where the system has failed our children. The state teachers' union and the district have followed laws that are structured to protect teachers and their rights. However, in this case, the system has not put children's education first. This is not a GATE issue per se. It is a problem that can occur and has occurred when the teacher is not matched for the program. Although elementary school teachers are credentialed to teach in a self-contained class for grades K through eight, teachers have their natural abilities for various grades and programs. A sixth-grade teacher is not necessarily a fit for kindergarten. We currently have a talented, motivated, wonderful teacher in the sixth-grade GATE, yet she was pink-slept, and the vacancy may be filled with a teacher who cannot meet the demands of this class. I ask you tonight to recognize this flaw in the system and request that you, the union and the district, meet to discuss why this problem continues and seek to find a solution for our children. The definition of insanity is to do the same thing over and over again and expect different results. We need to step out and look at this problem from a different perspective, so it does not continue over and over again. When you match teachers to a program, you have success. Motivated, happy teachers and students. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Denise Adams. My concern parallels a lot and follows up on many of the exciting events that you've attended this week and the award ceremonies. I've lived in the, or I've lived in the East Side neighborhood for 31 years, so I come to you tonight only because I felt compelled, after something happened this week, to speak up. I'm very concerned about Santa Barbara Junior High, Santa Barbara High School, disenfranchised students in my area. You can come up to Cold Spring School, you can go to Barker Pass, you can come everywhere. Graffiti, crime, everything's increasing on my side of town. And part of it may, in part, be due to increased student disenfranchement. It could be due to hours of operation. With the pending cutbacks coming, things are going to get worse. So I'm asking you tonight, as a board, if, when you have your private sessions, maybe it's time for us to think outside the box, look at employing some retired senior volunteers who, due to categorical funding, get paid minimum wage to volunteer their time to ensure coverage. What happened this Monday? Our society needs math and scientist people. We just had all these awards from DP. We have a math readiness test. For the first time ever, as I told Superintendent Swarovski, when my son took this test seven years ago, we had 17 Caucasian kids present for this test. I went after receiving three of these letters, not one, since January. They're signed, and they say, "Come May 9." I came, there were over 30 Latino students. I took personal responsibility for some of them, because their parents don't get off work till 5:30. We came to this test after receiving this letter signed by Mr. Beckio to come on May 9 for our algebra readiness test. I arrived at 3:00. I was told at 3:30, we would go into the Globe Theater to take the test by security. Additional students came. We got up to 57 students, the majority being Latino, who had worked really hard for this day with great encouragement that this is opening a door to a path to their future, which the board has supported. 3:30 came, we were told, guess what? No test. No one's here to administer it. We were also told, we have no administrator, no faculty on the presence on the site of Santa Barbara Junior High. And so I'm saying, if our hours of operation at Santa Barbara Junior High now are only from 8:00 to 3:00 with nobody there, other than a secretary, we need to start looking at how we're going to protect the safety of students, how we're going to- at how we're going to protect the safety of students, how we're going to follow through on when we send out letters that we're going to have a math readiness exam, and get creative. But we need coverage in the safety of students whose parents aren't available at the drop of a pin to pick them up. That's a big concern to me. So I hope you'll consider that. And again, math is everything to their future.
That concludes public comments. That will move us on to the acceptance of donations.
Move to accept with appreciation. Second that.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries, 5-0. That brings us to the consent agenda. We thank those of you who came for public comment, and we appreciate the input. Our consent agenda, are there any items that board members wish to pull? Ms. Lamone?
I have a question for D3, so I could pull it or ask the question quickly.
Do you think it's a, well, let's try the question, and we'll see. If it takes a while, we'll pull it.
D3, there are two individuals going to the exact same conference, same exact date, but there's almost a $400 difference. I'm curious why.
I'm sorry you didn't see my email. I did respond. I looked at those two, and in fact, there's a couple differences within about $100 category on the estimated cost for food and a couple other, other things. And as you know, what really the cost is, is what the, the receipts that are turned in. The other, more significant though, that was like $300, was the difference between a shared room and a single room. We try to double up whenever possible, as our, as our policy says, and we do that when we can. We're not going to force two individuals that don't even know each other to share a room. So that's the difference right there, and those two that you pointed out.
Thank you.
You see that you have revisions to D7?
Yes.
And two documents for D15.
For D15.
Okay.
Yes. So, board members, anything else?
I'm not going to pull any. I did ask many questions on several of them, and I did get my answers. The one that I'm not pleased with is D14, the project at Adams Elementary School, where there's a, one-third of the $100,000 is spent on consultants and design, bringing in bids of anywhere from 160, 180 to 200 some thousand, and all we have left is $65,000 to spend. It just didn't seem right to me. I got my answers, but I was not, I didn't, that one bothered me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and we appreciate board members asking questions in advance, so that they are clarified by the time we come to the meeting. Okay, then, do we have a motion?
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0, and we have none to come back to at the end of the agenda. So we get to our action agenda. We're a little behind, so we'll have to try to catch up sometime. Item E1, report on the ACT plan and the PSAT results in recognition for approval of the administrative, I'm sorry, administration of the ACT plan and/or PSAT testing for the 2011, 2012 school year. And I believe Dr. Hayden?
Yes, Dr. Hayden, Director of Research and Evaluation, will lead this report.
Hi, and behind me, I have Ryan Gleason from Dos Pueblos and Ed Behrens from San Marcos, so they can answer any of the questions that you might have about this, because they have a lot more information about what happens on the campus than I do. So this, I'm not going to necessarily show all the, if I can remember how to use this thing. No, that's not it. It's this one. Okay, Dave. I put the wrong one. Do it manually, thank you. Okay, well, hey, maybe it's going to work now. Okay, first of all, I put a slide up here, because I was curious to, this is the first time we've done this, and I was curious as to, did they give it to the right students? And so, if you can see right here, ninth grade, no tests were supposed to be given in ninth grade, and that pretty much happened, so that was good. Let me see if this will work now, yes. In 10th grade, the ACT plan was supposed to be given to all students universally. And we can see that that pretty much happened at Dos Pueblos and Santa Barbara High School, but something, and maybe Ed can talk about this in a few minutes, something didn't quite go right at San Marcos in terms of giving the ACT plan to 10th grade students. And then we go on to 11th grade, where the PSAT was supposed to be given to university at all students. And once again, pretty good coverage of the students, with San Marcos High School still not quite having a universal coverage. So, but overall, it looked pretty good. We gave, we basically, university gave the ACT plan to 10th grade students, and university gave it to 11th grade students across the district. And 12th grade looked like it was supposed to look like, students weren't giving it. I also took a look at Latino students, and the percentage of Latino students at the each campuses that were given the test. And fairly decent coverage by Dos Pueblos and Santa Barbara High. Once again, San Marcos, because of the fact that they didn't give it universally, obviously they had a lot of less Latinos percentage of the 10th grade class actually taking the test. So that, that makes sense, if you think about how the test was given at San Marcos High School. And same thing happened for the PSAT in 11th grade. We get the same results, but pretty decent coverage in terms of giving it to Latinos. This is just a graph that looks at the different language fluency percentages, and in general, there was pretty good results for the, all across the district, except for a drop in English learners at San Marcos. So it seems like a lot of the students that were not given the test at San Marcos ended up being English learner students. And this is the PSAT percentages, and once again, we see a low here. This is why I asked Ed Behrens to be here. The mean scaled scores, and this doesn't make much, unless you really know the test, this doesn't really tell you a lot, unless you look at the national norms. And one of the things about the ACT plan is that it normally is given universally in 10th grade. That's what it's designed to be done. So when we look at these national norms, which are next, we did quite well across the district in terms of how our students did nationally, with a high here of 65% in math at Dos Pueblos, which is quite stellar when you think about averages, you know? That's probably at least one standard deviation above the mean, maybe two, as far as I know. So that's a stellar score there. In general, though, almost all the scores were above the 50 percentile on average. And so that looks really decent to me in terms of how our students performed on the ACT plan in 10th grade. Okay, 11th grade, the PSAT in 11th grade, unfortunately, is not normally universally given. So what we did by universally giving it, we gave it to everybody instead of just the high-performing students, which normally, only the higher-performing students are going to be taking it. So I'm actually not discouraged by the fact that these are all fairly close to the 50 percentile, slightly below it. That's probably good results in terms of how our students are doing in comparison to the national norms on the PSAT. If the PSAT was universally given in 11th grade at all schools, then that would not look so good, but I don't think that's the case. 11th grade PSAT national norm comparisons, okay. The state norms are strange, and I can't, I never quite grasped what was going on with the state norms, so I'm not going to spend any time on that. This is for Latino students, and our Latino students, 10th grade plan national norm comparison for just the Latino students. And once again, they're doing okay, but obviously, there is a slight, it's not at 50% or higher. And, and so, I don't know how to address that. A lot of our Latino students end up being from socially economically disadvantaged families, and so that must be figuring in in some way. A lot of Latino students are English learners. That's probably figuring in in some way. But we obviously have some growth that we can take place in the ACT plan for Latino students in the 10th grade. And state norms. And that's the end of my part of the presentation. It took a while to get this data together. For one thing, the PSAT didn't actually send their data to us for months. We just, where's the data? And they say, "What's coming? It's coming." And then, when the data did get here, it was in the wrong format. So there were some complications trying to get this data set together. So, you have, before you, a recommendation, too. The recommendation is to continue to give the ACT plan universally, which would cost about $15,000 for the school district. Last year, this board voted to give both the ACT plan and the PSAT universally as a trial basis. My main reasons for recommending the ACT plan be continued next year is that it's a great tool for the schools to use on 10th grade students, to find out where they're at and where they're going, and what they need to do to improve their possibilities of going to college and to score better on the, the ACT test, which is given in 11th and 12th grade, and the SAT test, which is given in 11th and 12th grade. On the other hand, there is the PSAT test, which usually is given in 11th grade, and that also costs about $15,000. And so last year, the board voted for both of them. This year, I know we have budget cuts and problems, and so I think the preferred of the two tests, based upon my conversations with the schools, would be the ACT plan in 10th grade. So now, at this point, questions, and I have, both Ed and Ryan here can discuss anything about the schools and the, and the reasons for these two tests with you.
And maybe I can interject, because, board, you know, in giving these two tests, what was important was the kind of information we got, what sort of guidance our students got as a result of it. And given that we are in, in the midst of a state fiscal crisis, if we weren't to move forward with both of them, the question was, so which one provides the most useful information if we were to have to pick between one or the other? And of course, we would prefer, I believe, I believe both the schools would say we'd prefer to continue to give them both, but, boy, we're cutting back on everything. And to spend even $15,000 on something means that we don't spend that $15,000 on something else.
Okay, thank you. Board members, Ms. Lamone?
I have a few, so bear with me. First, I would like to get clarification on the idea of giving this test out universally. So, is the recommendation to only give it out to sophomores universally? So sophomores and juniors would not get the universal PSAT?
That's what's on your recommendation list, but the board can, of course, do whatever they wish.
Okay. Secondly, how is this information used? What goes back to the schools and what exactly is being changed?
Well, we use a DP really to inform our 10th grade counseling discussions. There's a lot of great info that you get back from the ACT plan as soon as the data is all processed and, and worked through. One of the biggest things is, it tells you, students put, before they take the test, they fill out an interest inventory, and they, they, they fill out an inventory that, that asks them about how they're, you know, feeling about their classes, do they need help in certain areas, and what's their plan for going to college and, and post-high school. And so what we get back for our counselors is a list of students who are indicating that they're not going to go to high school, or not going to go to college, but score a 16 or above. And that's really a powerful tool for our counselors to use. From a whole-school basis, we get to see how different demographics of students perform. For example, this year, we saw that our females outperformed our males in every subject area on the ACT plan, which was quite interesting. So the data that we get back, you know, the first, this first year's been kind of eye-opening, because it was a year where we could understand exactly what we're getting from the ACT plan. And now that we, we have it, our counseling team, in conjunction with our career center, have created a four-year career plan, and you can see in the 10th grade year, we have the plan as an integral part of that, because that 10th grade counseling discussion, if it includes data, is, is all the more informative. So the counselor sits down with the student and goes over their report, as well as their interests, and how their scores reflect how far they are along in pursuing their interests.
So let me follow up with that. So in the 10th grade, you do plan, but then 11th grade, you have PSAT?
Yes, and ideally, we would like to have both, but like Mr. Hayden said, we understand that it's tough financial times. The great thing that we get as a school from, for the PSAT, is something called the AP potential. And that's something that we can, if every student takes it, we can look at, we can plug into the AP potential on the College Board website, give us a list of students who have a 70% chance, for example, of getting a three or better on, on a given AP test. And that allows for us to do targeted scheduling and make sure that we have students in our AP classes that have a chance of being successful.
So, am I to believe that you don't get the same type of information from, from the PSAT than you do from plan to use for the 10th grade advising?
The ACT plan is much more comprehensive than what it can provide. It ties in the career piece, it also ties in performance. And that 10th grade year, you know, if you wait till 11th grade to have that discussion, it's one more year. Given what we have with career choices in 9th grade, having that 10th grade conversation is really a nice follow-up for that.
So, part of my, my concern is that, coming from a higher ed perspective, I actually talked to multiple undergrad admissions officers about this particular issue, and while they're very clear that UC does not prefer one over the other, they did give me some facts that I think are important to consider in this discussion. One being that the PSAT tends to provide more fee waivers than the ACT, and that benefits first-generation, low-income students. They also mentioned that the PS, for the SAT, which is, the SAT and the PSAT offer more fee waivers than the ACT. They also said that generally, the UC schools will use the PSAT list to do more outreach. So students tend to be recruited more if they take the PSAT. They also shared that because most, because most students in our state, first-gen, low-income students, apply to California schools, that thinking about what the California universities use might be something to consider. And while, again, they were very clear that they don't prefer one over the other, their recommendations to students have been, if you have to take one, take the PSAT. And so I'm trying to balance how, because essentially, this test, while it's giving great information to use for advising, it's a tool for admissions into a four-year. And if I'm hearing from the four-year schools that the PSAT is something that they use more, and, and sorry, one other piece was that they also, regardless of what you get on the SAT or the ACT, ACT plan, they convert it into SAT scores. And that's what an evaluator sees. So if you have thoughts, I'm open to them. I'm not, and I personally want to make it very clear, I don't, the value of each test is a whole different discussion, but I'm open to thoughts and just kind of thinking through this process.
Yeah, I mean, I think you brought up great points. They're all, if you have to choose between each test, there are definitely pros and cons of each. From an administrative standpoint, from a student counseling standpoint, and from a, the amount of data that we get back from the PSAT, what we get back is a score and the opportunity to go and, and look at the AP potential data. What we get back for the ACT, ACT plan is really a foundation for discussions with students about their career and, and post, post-high school goals. It also is, is very informative for students to know exactly how far they are on track. A lot of students think they're college, college-ready, and they get back and they have a 14. And then they need to identify their area, whether it be science, social studies, or English, that they have a deficiency in, and the counselor can guide them to a place where they can target that given subject area and get help, so that they're more college-ready. I'm just, I would speak to it from a, from the data that we get and from the conversations that we have, the ACT plan is much more valuable for us as a school.
Can I just follow up on that really quickly? Because when I was looking at this, and it, my question kind of fits in with Ms. Lamone's question, I had the impression that the ACT plan that the ACT Plan provides the schools with more information, and as you said, more ability to maybe counsel the students and earlier. And the PSAT perhaps provides the students with more, I don't want to say with more information or more assistance, because I think what they get from the counseling is really important. But I think I was kind of feeling like the information that you just quoted, Ms. Lamone, that the students maybe benefit after high school a little bit more from the PSAT. I'm not saying that clearly, because I don't want to minimize the benefit they get from the kind of counseling that they receive.
No, I understand what you're saying. And I've only been in my role for less than a year, almost a year. But I talked to our head counselor before coming tonight, and he indicated to me that in the past, we have the majority of our students who want to take the PSAT can, they can afford it. And those that don't, as Ms. Lamone referred to, qualify for fee waivers. So in terms of a universal test that gives us data that is meaningful for student conversations, the ACT Plan wins, in my opinion.
That's an important piece of information. Thank you.
I'm going to ask both of them, they can say how many students generally take the PSAT normally, before we did the universal aspect of the PSAT. Would you say, you know, 50% of the students take it, 70%? What's the percentage of students that end up taking the PSAT anyway?
I can only guess, being an administrator for only a year. I was shored up in a classroom for the time two years ago when we were taking the PSAT. I would guess it's around the 50% mark. That would be a guess, though.
Ms. Parker?
Well, of course, I do want to ask the obvious question about what the differences were at San Marcos in terms of actually administering the plan. So I'd love to hear that. And my other question is, in both cases, what was it like on the ground actually administering the test? How did students respond? A lot of students were taking tests that they had had no intention of taking. And this was sort of a first experience and maybe even kind of a surprise. I don't, I don't know. So I'd like to hear, how did they respond about actually taking the test? How were they with their proctors? And then how did they respond with the results?
Well, it was a scheduling challenge, to be honest, because we had all 10th and 11th graders taking the test on a day that 9th and 12th graders didn't have to test. So we turned lemons into lemonade. The 9th graders spent the day, those four hours, participating in a series of rotations where they got signed up for Naviance. They spent some time with our freshman counselor. They got to know the other side of our AP of discipline. And then the 12th graders participated in activities. One of the reasons that I hope we continue this, at least for another year, is because it takes a good year to get it right. It takes a year to see the kinks in the process. And it took us a year to really understand the data that we get, so that we can inform teachers and then inform students as to why the test is important. To answer your question directly about students, I'd say that our students tried their best. We tried to sell them with what we knew on the importance of the test. There were students, though, our most at-risk students, who came back and said that taking the test and being forced to take it made them feel stupid. That's a small group, but it's important to note that.
So Dos Pueblos and Santa Barbara, both, I believe, did special testing schedule. As Ryan just noted, we did a pull-out program, which obviously wasn't as effective. So next year, we would go to a special testing schedule like the other two schools to increase our percentage of participation. One interesting thing, Ryan and I both went to the Equity and Education Conference in Chicago. Thank you for sending us. And at that conference, one of the speakers was talking about this AP potential, and one of the people in the audience said that they were able to increase the underrepresented student participation in AP classes at their school by some massive amount, like 20%. So I was really excited to get back here and like, and boost our participation. So what I did is I ran our AP potential at the lowest threshold available. And then, under first analysis, just using Hispanic surnames, I looked at all of their course requests for next year. And, well, what I found is that we're already doing a really good job, because all of the students who I highlighted on these 17 pages, they all are in honors or AP classes already. And many of them are also in Avid. I was only able to identify three students through this AP potential that are not currently, who met the potential at the lowest threshold, which is like 53% that they would enable us to set it at, that are not currently scheduled for honors and AP for next year. So I guess that's good news, that we're doing a good job. I was really excited that I was going to have this great tool to really increase participation. And I did the analysis to see how that worked out. So we will encourage those three students to sign up for either honors or AP for next year.
I don't want to throw a damper on your good news, but I'm just wondering if, because of the pull-out system that you used rather than the schedule, if you might have disproportionately tested students who were already predisposed to be aware of their academic options. And the students that missed the testing are the ones that you might have, you know, seen a bigger selection who were not already in the AP and honors classes.
Right.
And so that if, so maybe there is good news here, too.
Yes.
That if you do it through the scheduled approach next year, maybe you will encounter that larger percentage of students that you can target.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Sorry. Real briefly, I also called Fran Wagonak, because I wanted Santa Barbara High School to be represented. And she gave me some feedback about the counseling team at Santa Barbara High, and they definitely do use the results. She noted that they have their 10th grade night where they distribute the PLAN results, and they have their 11th grade night where they distribute their PSAT results. She said that they invite UCSB and Cal State Channel Islands in to speak about the results. They also have Princeton Review and Revolution Prep preparing information for the students. So Santa Barbara High, and we do similar, very similar nights for our students at San Marcos.
Mrs. Deacon?
Mr. Barrington, I actually shared that information last night, which I was really happy to hear about, that you're getting benefit out of the conferences like the Equity and Education Conference. Just to clarify, this AP potential is, comes out of taking the PSAT, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. The other, on one hand, I see the value of the PSAT, although I have heard the kinds of statements that Mr. Gleason mentioned about some students actually feeling put in a situation that's not comfortable for them by being asked to take this test. And I don't know how we balance that out. I do think that the ACT gives the counselors a lot of information to work for, and that then they could identify 11th graders who would be encouraged to take the PSAT in the 11th grade. And we know that already, it sounds like about half of the students already are taking that, and their parents are paying for that. Or if they're not able to, then there are fee waivers for that. So this is the first year that we ever, that we had offered the PSAT on a mandatory basis. It had never been done that way before. I know that your designation as a National Merit Scholar is based on your PSAT score. So we wouldn't want to lose any students who might have that designation by them not taking the test, although I suspect most of those students are already taking it. You know, I get the feeling that the ACT and the College Board, which administers the PSAT, are kind of in a marketing war, and that they've offered the ACT Plan in an effort to increase use and acceptance by colleges for ACT. And ACT is widely used on the East Coast and in the Midwest. It's really the West Coast that kind of leans towards the PSAT in the 11th grade. Given the cost, I actually would lean towards using the ACT, taking the information for that, and then being very aggressive in identifying all the students who should be taking the PSATs. And maybe that's all of the students, but making sure that they know how to get the fee waivers if they need them, and then making sure that they're all taking that test. But would it be $15,000 to do the PSAT on top an additional $15,000? Okay, so my preference, I think, at this point, would be to just stay with the 10th grade ACT Plan, because I see so much benefit coming to the counselors who are then able to take that information to the students.
Further board comments?
Okay, well, I just wondered if, because my preference actually was to keep them both, even in this tight budget scenario, in, if there's any possible way that we can. And I know we just talked about what's probably coming down the pike for us, and looking at may revise and our June deadline. And so I may be being unrealistic. But I do want to say that the comment regarding students feeling uncomfortable taking the test and being required to take it resonates with me. And I'm wondering if we offered the universal, well, I don't know, I mean, we can't really call it a universal if we're offering it. But if we, is there a way that we can provide it to the students and still offer an opt-out provision?
I don't see why we couldn't. I mean, we do it for star testing. Families request an exemption from that. It would be challenging when we get into the 50 or 100, just from a logistical standpoint of how challenging it is to manage that day, given our staff, teachers are proctoring the test, 9th grade teachers are managing the 9th graders, 12th grade teachers are managing the 12th graders, and the administrators are running around campus trying to keep it all together. To have another cohort of 100 opting out, certainly we could problem-solve through it. You know, I said that comment earlier, but I also want to say that the experience of taking that test and getting ready for the high-stakes exams of the spring certainly is something to consider as well. And as we have with the ACT Plan, we have students who score 16 or below, or, sorry, 16 or above, who indicate that they don't, aren't planning on going to college. I'm sure with universal use of the PSAT, when we run that AP potential, I'm excited to get the AP potential Excel files to Brian Rouse, and see if he can put them in Aries, and see if we can query out, you know, underrepresented kids who have a high, high chance of achievement in AP classes. So for us, you know, we, at DP, we completely understand the position that you're in as a board and as district administration. But we took your suggestion last year and acted on it with full fidelity, and we created this. And we can certainly piece this together and make adjustments to it. But we believe in both tests for a number of reasons, but the ACT Plan is certainly our preference.
Okay. Well, this is on our action agenda. Our agenda item identifies the fiscal impact as 29,000.
There was an updated agenda item that was submitted, and it actually had the 15,000 as the impact. I do not know why it didn't get corrected. So that was a clerical error at some point, and I don't know where it was.
Okay. It is in our, we do have the 15,000 in our attachment.
Mm-hmm.
But it's just not on the agenda. Okay.
Yes, I know, and I don't.
So the recommendation is really the 15,000?
Well, yes, the recommendation is that if you have to choose between two of them, it would be the ACT Plan for 15,000.
Okay. Okay. So do board members want to make a motion? Or Mr. Herron, did you?
And I'll second that.
Okay. So the recommendation is to adopt the ACT Plan with the 15,000 attached?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I think we all see the value of the PSAT, and we certainly don't want to let go of that value. But I'm hoping that if we did pass this first option, that you all could, and I know you're doing this already, make a real concerted effort to get as many students taking the PSAT as possible, and to use the ACT Plan information to really identify and go after the students who need to take it.
And I'll just say that it's clear that both have added value in different ways. And for me, I look at the added value in relation to the purpose of the test, which is for college admissions. And given that undergrad admissions across the state still use the PSATs for college admissions purposes, that's where I stand. So, I mean, and I appreciate, I see the added value in both, and I think it's just a tough decision. And so mine is based on the purpose and intent of the PSAT, or the test itself.
I actually would, I just want to throw this out there again. I would prefer to see us adopt both of them, once again, with the, sort of caveat, that we may have to come back and cut a piece of it. And if we do, it would probably be the PSAT. But I, right now, before we have looked at the additional cuts that we need to make, I'm reluctant to agree to drop the PSAT. So I would rather see us adopt them both at this point. Ms. Parker?
I would actually suggest that we do the, go the opposite direction, but that we do bring it back if we are happily surprised over the next three weeks. You know, I just feel like it's all the harder to go back and have to revisit it when, you know, the likelihood is that we're not going to have happy news over the next three weeks.
I agree. I agree. Well, we will have, hopefully, we will have some happy news regarding our unification. But, okay, well, then, we can call the question. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries three, two. Okay, thank you very much. And again, we hope, we will encourage you to do everything you can to encourage students to take the PSAT as well, and apply for those waivers that are available to them. Okay, Item E2, Approval of Revised Independent Study Physical Education Participation Criteria and Revisions to Administrative Regulation 6158.1 Independent Study Physical Education. And Ms. Sawaski, you are going to be presenting this item?
Yes, I am. Excuse me, again. I actually want to say upfront that I am glad that it's taken this long, because every time we see this, I get more parent feedback. I, you know, staff gets to think a little bit more, and we all learn a little bit more about the program. So I'm going to try to be brief, because I know that I've talked a lot about the history before. So the intent of the original independent study physical education program, which we'll call ISPE, much easier, was to provide an alternative way of receiving the required four semesters of high school and four semesters of junior high PE for the elite athlete who spends a majority of non-school hours training in his or her sport. That was originally why it came about, and why most districts have it. Our school PE athletic staff and administrators feel strongly that students, particularly in junior high school, should participate in the regular PE classes. This is not only for social reasons, but also to expose students to a variety of lifelong sports and healthy living activities. Through staffing reductions this year, actually, or actually starting last year, I think you know, the health curriculum is now being taught through our PE and science classes. So we would, we need to accommodate with that, too, because the health curriculum is important to us. Since the last board meeting, I've communicated with many current and former, I'll call them ISP parents, ISPE parents, and school staff, who in turn have done a lot of communication with our local coaches, dance studio owners and instructors. I haven't talked with them directly, but our staff keeps in contact with them, of course, the parents do, because they see them all the time, to get their opinion on the ISPE criteria. We've listened well, I feel, really carefully, and we've discussed the issues to bring you a set of criteria that aligns with much of what these experts consider to be the most accurate descriptions of their elite student athletes. So, you know, the time spent, who they are, what they do, it's in alignment with that, if that's, in fact, what we're trying to do, is create a policy for that elite student athlete. athlete. The criteria, I know, will not accommodate or meet the desires of everyone, however, I believe it does serve the elite athlete for which the ISP program was originally designed." So I have some data from the last board meeting that I was asked to bring tonight, and also some new data that's been requested by a board member, but before sharing these, and Dave, do you have that ready? Oh, thank you. I want to show a couple of revisions that I've made since the documents were prepared that you have. Again, these revisions were based on discussions with parents and other stakeholders. So the first one is, on the recommended criteria, it's kind of a simple, a simple one, it's not big, but in the time, number two, about how students shall participate in the instruction, I did want to include competition or performance, you have that in the, in your document, because that was unclear to some parents, whether that would count for the hours, and indeed it does. But what a couple of parents pointed out to me is that, in the case of a student illness, or they're on the mock trial team, or something happens within the short weeks period, it's hard to get that 10 hours in. They all agree that their students do way more than 10 hours in a week typically, but stretching it over two weeks seemed to make more sense, so doubling that to 20 hours, a minimum of 20 hours over two weeks. We also had the recommendation that's in your document, that it should be over four days. In talking to a couple people, I thought, you know, that's a lot to track, most of these students are certainly working four days a week, if not seven days a week, and so I just pulled that out. I think it's unnecessary, I'm trying to make this as short and concise as possible, and I think we've got it pretty wordy already. So that's my recommendation to change that out, so number two would be different. And then one other that's very minor, that is in the AR, that I don't have a copy to go up there, Dave, it's not, it's just in the AR. On page two of three, there's a, a last, right at the very top of the page, there's a bulleted item that talks about, "The activity in which the student wishes to participate must not be the same as one provided by the school student." The second line is crossed out in your copy, because it talks about team sports, and in fact, this new criteria doesn't, you know, allow really team sports. It's much better, I believe, and if someone else I talked to, stakeholder, is just to cross the whole thing out and just eliminate that. It doesn't really need to be in there, if we're in fact going to follow the criteria about the team sports.
I'm sorry, you're saying draw, cross out the entire bullet?
The entire bullet, yes. So the thing that would be crossed out, that's not already crossed, crossed out, is, "The activity in which the student wishes to participate must not be the same as one provided by the school student, student, school." I'm thinking of the swimmer. We have swim teams, we have swimmers who certainly qualify for ISPE, so that doesn't make a lot of sense there. It made sense in a different context, so I think we can just eliminate that. Okay, the next thing then I want to show, Dave, if you can just put that aside and then place the next one, that was the one that you saw last time. One board member and maybe others wanted to see the current ISP activity, so, and this is in junior high. And so you can see that, I think what's important is probably the water polo here, because if we're looking at a, a team sport, that potentially would not be one where students would meet the criteria, unless that person, the, the kids on the water polo are actually swimmers, too, and they will qualify for that, that, that probably would have some effect. But that's, that's where the current activities lie now. So then, and we can just hold that in case someone wants to look that again, that, that was, again, the available spaces in PE, but if you can give me the next sheet over, this is the new data, that I, I asked the coordinators right now to look at, again, I'm looking at, the top part is junior high, so the current ISP student count, which is the same as the other page. If they applied the new ISPE criteria, what would the student count be? Now, this is, you know, not really a guess, it's much better than a guess, it's looking at the data and what the students have been turning in as far as time, and their ranking and all of that, and their portfolios. And so you can see the difference, meaning, this is the 12 count, the 14 is who would be placed back in PE classes right now, at Galita Valley, and 12 at La Colina, 1 at Lacunra, and 25 at Santa Barbara Junior. I copied again the PE available spaces that we have. And so, it's a tight fit at Galita Valley, we're down to one kid, but it shows you, at this point, just given the numbers and given the data, we would be able to accommodate all of those students in the current section, so it would not cost us another section. Again, we don't know from year to year, you know, who's coming in and, and who's applying in the numbers exactly. The high school, I was also asked to get a count on the high school ISPE, it's there. I don't know why San Marcos has fewer, but they gave me that, and they did not see that it would really change much, that they didn't, they don't currently have a lot of, of team sports, they just thought it wouldn't really have that big of an impact. So that's the data that you asked for on that. At this point, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm ready to, you know, take questions, talk about it, I'm sure you want to listen to public comment. We do get down to, of course, questions about fiscal implications, and this didn't start out as a budget item necessarily, but there's always, you know, of, of, an implication there. Given the, this here, you can see, and in my, my memo, I state that, that the plan for, for the cost of that would go with the teacher hourly rate, and it would be probably less than $10,000 for the year, we'd have half as many students. If we kept the criteria we have in place right now, and this, does, the math doesn't sound quite right to you, and, and the reason is that I'm considering a different kind of, of payment, is that we were currently using the stipend, the MOU that has been expired for a couple of years, and it did cost us about, between 28 and $30,000 this year for the current students. And if we kept the same criteria, we, you know, predicted to be about that, that many students. I would suggest, if we went that way, though, that we would figure out a different kind of structure, and I would try to get it down to, like, 20,000, something like that. Even, you know, I'm, I'm thinking, could we have one district coordinator that used their one section to, you know, work with all the junior high ISPE students? This high school is not accosted at all, the athletic directors pick up that responsibility, excuse me. So there's a couple of my thoughts, as far as options for what you're all thinking, I know you've heard lots of things, and I'm, I'll try to answer your questions if you have some.
Board members?
Public comments?
Should we hear public comment first? Okay, I have one really quick question, just to, based on what you just said. Do we know if there's, because you said the ADs at the high schools pick up the coordination, but-
Yes.
I'm thinking for 50 students, that could be fairly significant in terms of time.
Absolutely.
Are there activities or tasks that the ADs are not doing because they're giving their time to this, that we are paying someone else to do?
I, I don't know that. I know that our athletic directors don't actually instruct classes, they have, you know, time. I don't know, prior to ISPE coming in, what they were doing, I mean, it's just been a part of their job, they, you know, and talking to them, they communicate a lot with the coaches and instructors in town. It's, it's a significant, not significant, but it's a piece of their job.
Okay, thank you.
Could you go back one slide? I would like to ask one question. Can you just quickly go through, which of those activities would be not qualified in the new criteria?
Well, if you look, think about dance, that, depending on the, if you're just looking at the activity, I won't go, because, you know, some dance students wouldn't, some wouldn't. It appears to me that water polo is a team sport, so if we said competes individually, I don't think that would fit, unless, of course, that student was also a swimmer and was doing swimming and competed, you know, that way, which some ki, kids could be. Tennis can be individual, you know, that, that's a, can, considered an individual sport, you might compete in doubles, but you're ranked individually usually, or you could be ranked as a double team, doubles team. Gymnastics, those students are on teams, but they're also individual competitors. Golf's individual, fencing, skiing, basketball, probably not, baseball, probably not. The others all appear to me, unless I'm missing something, I'm not an expert in all of those, but the one that I thought would have the most significant effect as far as numbers is the water polo.
And if, I, I don't know this for a fact, but if there are students in water polo that are exceptional and are in, in competition, which there might be, would they then be able to qualify as an individual? If they are nationally ranked or in water polo?
I would, I would think so. Again, you know, our policy as all of these does have an appeal process in it, and I believe there are going to be exceptions. I have a perfect example, when I was principal in carpentry, we had this program, we, I had a student on my campus who was an ice hockey player. There was no ice hockey, you know, court, or what do you call them? The ice, rink, excuse me, rink, yes, except down in the valley. And so this student really needed to get down there and spend that hour in the car doing homework, and he literally went down there five, sometimes seven days a week, he was, you know, on track to becoming, he wanted to be a professional. So that's an exception, and of course, there will be exceptions.
And I don't see soccer up there anyplace, and I don't-
No, there were no, there were no-
I don't see roller, roller hockey?
Not this year, there were no students that, this is just current right now. Okay?
Can I just address Mr. Herron's question briefly, because my kids played water polo? And, yes, there are water polo players that are, are ranked, and they play on Olympic development teams, and so there's clearly students, I think, for whom that is their primary sport, that they would qualify under the new policy, but also, almost all water polo players swim as well, and a lot of their training involves that, so I don't think that we would-
Thank you.
-sit at a disadvantage. By the way, and my, my kids both did junior high PE and went to practice after school.
Okay, I think at this point, I'm going to, I think we have a number of speakers, I know we were out of speaker slips, and so some of you have submitted them on paper, and I appreciate your resourcefulness. I think we have some new speaker slips available in the back. Is there anyone who has not submitted one yet, who is interested in speaking to this item? Okay, so at this point, I'm going to close the speaker slips, we have, do you know how many we have?
I haven't counted, but I think there's probably 15.
Okay, because of the number of speakers we have, we are going to have to limit the speaker's time to two minutes rather than, than the customary three, so hopefully, if somebody else makes your point, you can try to focus on the other points that you want to make, and get, get everything in, in the two minutes that you have.
Okay, so that's two minutes with a 30-second warning, thank you. Stephen Lovelace, followed by Gwen Hedlik, followed by Giselle Mosley.
Hello, I'm Stephen Lovelace, and I have a big dance studio here in town called Santa Barbara Dance Arts, and I probably have about 20-ish dancers that are on independent PE right now, many of them are in junior high and high school, they're very high-achieving kids, they are AP students and do the play, and they're at my studio sometimes 12, 15 hours a week. I teach them how to choreograph and teach classes, and sometimes when they go to college, they teach for $25 an hour instead of working in a restaurant for eight and have to dig for tips, which is pretty great for them. I think independent PE is a great program, of course, you know, I wish there had been something like this when I was a kid, because I really am not a sports person, but I am an athlete, and I'm, and I was a very good athlete, I didn't even know it until I started dancing in college that I was an athlete, because nothing like this was ever handed to me, or given to me, or provided to me. We have a great environment down there, we create, create community for the students, I think, which is one of the great things that schools do for the students as well. And we have a scholarship program, we have a policy to turn nobody away for lack of funds. I have 40 dancers in my dance companies, and they are all elite dancers. It's hard to really rank them, I think a lot of independent PE doesn't have language for dance, I don't know about sailing, I don't know about water polo, that's not my thing. But when I read through the criteria, I, it doesn't really address a lot of the issues that we have. I also want to encourage you to look at the 10 hours a week, many of my kids dance 10 hours a week, I think it's excessive, and to go from 200 minutes a week, which is what you're asking for now, to 600 minutes a week, with many of my kids having two to three hours of homework every night on top of this, is a little excessive to require that. I'd also like, so there is, I'd like some, to ask the district to consider some kind of, like, standardization of this, every school does things differently, and I just spent $1,000 for next year to provide independent PE insurance for you guys, so if it's cut back, that's out of my hide. Okay, thank you.
Gwen Hedlik? Ladneak, those double consonants get me every time, sorry. And Giselle Mosley, followed by Kurt Greer.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak. I was thinking about this whole situation, the ISPE currently as it stands is good for elite athletes, and the highly gifted, nationally-ranked athletes, and PE classes are great for those that need the diversity of options. But again, I stand true to the fact that my son and many children that he plays hockey with have found something that they thrive at, that they didn't find in any other sports at a younger age, they're all leaving junior high, junior high age, they're going into high school now, there's a bunch of kids in high school that play hockey. And with the higher demands for students in secondary schools, and the limited windows of opportunity between the abundant choices that they won't have the time to explore, I have a very adamant opinion that I think that they should be allowed to play hockey or other team sports or independent sports, if it's what they are thriving at, because when they're thriving and they're happy at what the sport that they've chosen, they, again, are better students. And I think this really should be looked at, if not with the ISPE, I, I can understand that situation, but we're really not addressing those children that find themselves later in something that they want to dedicate themselves to. And I would like to find out if there's some way that we can look into that possibility. Our particular situation-
20 seconds.
-we handled the insurance problem, and then when we found out it was probably a fiscal problem, we've even addressed those issues, and we also have had a really hard time trying to find out what the issues are, so that we could actually address them. And we've had a lot of despondent, you know, not responses enough to find out, I mean, a lot of information, I couldn't find that, and I didn't know who to go to for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Giselle Mosley, followed by Kurt Greer, followed by Tim Wild.
Yes, my name is Giselle Mosley, and I have a 13-year-old daughter currently attending the Santa Barbara Junior High and participating in the ISPE program. She is a ballet dancer and has been taking ballet for more than 10 years. I am completely in favor of the ISPE program with its current criteria for students who have found joy and growth in a sport that they might not find in a traditional PE setting. My daughter leaves school an hour early because she did not take a PE class. Immediately after school, she puts several hours into homework before her 4:30 ballet class. She will dance at the studio until 6:30, many evenings it is later due to extra rehearsals after class. And after class, then we have dinner, and she finishes up any leftover homework. Without the ISPE program, because school comes first, she will have to cut back on her dancing in order to keep her grades up and get adequate sleep. And while there is value in a PE class, it is not a fair trade in her eyes or mine. Sorry, I'm getting verklempt, I don't know why. Restricting the criteria for dancers to, dance students must have demonstrate, must demonstrate that they have been in an audition company for at least one year, and have been in a non-studio production in a leading dance role, will eliminate most, if not all, of the dancers currently in, on the ISPE program. This criteria is just not appropriate for 12-through-15-year-old dancers, and even for older dancers, this is Santa Barbara, not LA or New York. The opportunities for this age group of dancers to consistently be in an audition solo role in a non-studio performance-
30 seconds.
...are just not out there. At this time, in their younger teens, dancers need to be putting in hours of training and participating in- participating in as many in-studio performances as they can to get to the point where they are achieving solos in their later teens and early twenties. Cutting back on her dance hours now, if she cannot participate in the ISPE program, will affect her growth as a dancer and will be a setback to all of her hard work over the years. So I urge you to reconsider this criteria. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have a letter from her ballet studio director, and I don't, may I read that?
You can pass it out.
I just have one copy.
Okay. Kurt Greer, followed by Tim Wild, followed by Marla Hashima.
Hi, my name is Kurt Greer. I'm representing the Santa Barbara Hockey Association and specifically our youth league. I've emailed some of you, and some of our parents are as well, and it was good to hear some more information tonight on the program, but I'm actually more confused than I was before I came in. I actually expected to hear there were 500 kids in the program, and you were going to drop it to 100 kids, and that was going to save money. And what I see is it's 107 junior high kids and 50, dropped to 55, and the high school count will say that stay the same. And I also see that it's about a $20,000 delta. I think we're talking, the current program is 30,000, new program is 10. That's not a lot of money. We do youth car, fundraising car washes, and we pull in $1,000. So 20 car washes, we've covered that cost delta. But what I see in the change in the program criterion is disenfranchising a whole bunch of participants that may be in it now and folks that want to play, that want to do sports that are not offered by the high schools. I don't understand why there is this drive to go back to what the program was five years ago or six years ago or when it was first envisioned. I see the program having evolved to meet the needs of the community today. It's what your parents want today. So why would you take something that's successful and go back in time and get beat up here, quite honestly, for $20,000? I mean, it just really doesn't seem to make sense to me. I don't know how else to say that.
30 seconds.
Yeah, so I just have a hypothetical question. If you're one of our rec skaters right now, and this is a puck, I came from the rink. It's a 15-and-under game tonight. My skate, my boy chases, Chase skates. If you're a rec skater today and you want to play high school hockey at UCSB, where do you go? You have nowhere to go but us, nowhere. UCSB doesn't have ice, they have roller. So you play with us, you move up to our high school league that plays competitively.
You've got about three more seconds.
Great, and then you can move on to the college level. Otherwise, there's nowhere to go. So I just want you to think about that. And if it's 20 grand you need, let's talk about fundraising.
Thank you.
I have a daughter who is in the junior high going on to the high school, and she's a classical ballet dancer. And I want to second everything Ms. Mosley said. She pretty much laid it on the line, but I just would like to say that, you know, there's no disrespect to your present PE teachers, but when I go to the junior high, half the kids are sitting on a park bench, they're yakking with their friends, and I understand that social aspect. But when she's dancing three hours a night, because she's studying in Belgium this summer, she doesn't have time to sit on a bench and talk. She, she's a straight A student, all honors classes. She needs every hour she can get, even if that hour is just to take a break and say, I need this hour to relax. So I just want you to, to take into consideration that the competitive requirements and the, I can understand the time, you know, the, the 10 hours or whatever, you know, that's what she does anyway. But the competitive requirement for a dancer is, that's impossible. There's one decent classical ballet competition in this country. There's many others, but they're not, you know, for example, that competition put that person on Dancing with Stars the other night in a, that is the only competition that really will be of benefit. The rest of the time, they need to work on the growth of their muscles and everything that takes to be a dancer when you're 20.
30 seconds.
Competitions aren't going to get their muscles better. What's going to get them better is going to class day in and day out. Sometimes it's boring. Sorry.
Mary Ann Nielsen, followed by Joan Vinyoki, followed by Janine Dallow.
I have more slips here.
Boy, you mentioned my name earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mine's a Spanish.
You're not Tim Wild. Okay, come on up. Thank you.
Well, now, now you know my name. I currently have a child in independent study PE in grade eight and doing sailing. I'm actually here on behalf of the Santa Barbara Youth Sailing Foundation and also the Santa Barbara Hockey Association. You've heard from the hockey association, I'm going to talk a little bit about the sailing end of it. But basically, both of our groups do not support the proposal as it's written. We like independent PE, but there's a couple of issues that have changed and I think are going to cause some problems. And the main issue, or one of the main issues, is that the criteria, although you've changed a bit from national, international ranked, you still have it at quite a high ranking. And to me, if you're competing at a state level, you're pretty highly ranked. To be in the top 25% is going to really restrict the number of kids that are going to be able to participate in the program. And for example, the youth's foundation, Sailing Foundation, has high school racing teams. And we offer, we have teams from three different high schools. We have approximately 16 to 18 kids that compete around the state, different venues. They're competing at a state level, but are they ranked in the top 25%? Probably not. So are we saying that, well, I'm sorry, you're not good enough, we're not going to support you anymore, you're going to have to stop doing the sailing program? It's what the message is that we're getting. So I'm not sure about the criteria.
30 seconds.
The other thing is the time requirements are excessive and will also restrict participation. And then last but not least, it seems that this is financially motivated. However, we're starting to see some numbers here, but I would like to see a detailed financial analysis, and I'd like to explore some options. We've talked about fundraising, we've talked about maybe fees for independent study, there's other possibilities there without restricting the number of people that participate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry I missed you earlier. Mary Ann Nielsen, Joan Vinyoki, Janine Dallow.
Hi, I'm a parent of a freshman in college, and firstly, I'd like a clarification of like, why do the ISPE students have to do 20 hours every two weeks, whereas the district PE students only have to do 10 hours of class for two-week period? And my, I'm a single parent, Rebecca, I never could have afforded having her try tennis, swimming, and things like that, dance. And because she was a, she's just like a miracle kid, she's a gifted child, she's at Harvard, she's a miracle, and she needed that. She's the whole child, the spiritual child, the emotional child, the physical child, the emotional child. Let them be happy. We have to have them, they're more than a number, they have to be happy. In my heart, I wanted to cry. If hockey makes them happy, if dance makes them happy, they could get a college scholarship. Like, who knew? It's a miracle. She's at Harvard. So please, let them be happy. They're not a number. And thank you.
Thank you. Joan Vinyoki, Janine Dallow, and Lane Wheeler.
Well, I was here last time, and I was so nervous because I voted for some of you, so it was kind of exciting. It was exciting to be in a, in a space like this. But as for ice hockey clarification, I'm one of those people. I drive to Simi Valley for my son, because that was the closest thing. When I arrived at La Colina this year, I said, oh my God, I'm spending like more than this time. Can we figure something out? So my son, because he got into band, who knew? This is a kid who was held back at elementary school, who started late also, and he found hockey because of some of the great coaches right here, Tim and Kirk, and then, of course, me later on. And, not that I'm a good kid, but it's something like she said that he loves. He is so motivated, the entire hour and a half in traffic, two-hour drive to Simi Valley after school, where I've gotten off work early, switched cars with my husband, I don't have a car, and driving all this way, he's in the back doing his homework. He has six classes plus the band, practicing the French horn on the weekend because of Mr. Kuei, who's amazing. And there is no other place to do this, and I want to give back. And so we all volunteer with the youth hockey here, because all we have is roller hockey. But eventually, we will have, hopefully, an ice rink. And these are kids that, some of the ice hockey kids I know, some of the dancers I know, where the parents have the ability, maybe they're, I think they have one person as a midwife, two of her, her older daughters, they pull them out of regular school. They go to City College, they homeschool, and they allow their child to go down to have private lessons in Oxnard or whatever for these different events that they cannot do at school. And I just really wish we could keep it how it is, because it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Lane Wheeler.
Thank you, Lane Wheeler. President of Santa Barbara Teachers Association just wanted to remind the board that this would need to be negotiated as, as part of the stipend contract and as part of the contract. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that concludes public comment. No, we have, I'm sorry?
Janine Dallow.
Oh, I apologize.
No, that was my mistake, I'm sorry. Come on up. The absence of official speaker cards must have thrown me off my stride.
Different colors, different sounds. Hi, thank you again for your time. My son is going into his ninth grade. It's our first student at the high school, so this is all new to me. And I'm wondering, it's, it's been a bit of a runaround getting to this point. The first I'd heard of ISPE was when two of the high school counselors came out to Crane to talk to the kids about their electives, helping them choose their electives. And we were told then, this was just over a month ago, that ISPE was available to, to children that didn't qualify or wouldn't make the, the team sports at the high school and that maybe wanted to find an alternative to the regular PE class, and that the only issue keeping them back was to be sure that the organization that they were involved with would have enough insurance. And over the course of the last month, I quickly learned that that wasn't the only issue. I've been sent to the principal, and I ended up here saying, finding out it was an issue that was coming before the school board. But it's been very difficult, and I'm wondering, I don't know if it's, if it's allowable for me to ask you, why are you changing the ISPE program? What, what is the issue?
We actually, we actually don't involve in dialogue, although we want to hear what you have to say, but as a board, we'll be addressing various points.
Okay, I can respect that, but it's been difficult to get to this point, and now here you are, you're, you're going to vote on it, and it's been difficult. There's a lot of concerned parents, and I'm not sure that we're being listened to. I don't know where, where the influence is coming from in your decision-making, and it's a little unsettling for me as a parent. Thank you.
Thank you. Indra Strong.
Some of it was resolved, some was. I'm Indra Strong. I've been corresponding with some of you and thankful for responses. I have a kid graduating from eighth grade, two years ISPE, English is my fourth language, sorry. It's been a brilliant, brilliant journey for him. He started with your then requirements. He definitely fits them now. He needed those two years to get there. He's there. He has a brother who's coming into seventh grade, and now I'm saying, you, even though your results right now are better than your brothers were then, and you're spending more time, you actually don't fit. Things have changed and shifted, and he's the middle son, and for him, it's going to be hard. Okay, I'll swallow it, I'll take the 10 hours, he'll be a better athlete, he'll be fine. I can't do the 75th percentile, whatever that would mean. I have a little bit from his coach here, we've been corresponding and talking, and what he's saying is that probably some of that responsibility should be put on the coaches. It wasn't my idea, the coaches here. The coaches might be the ones who say, absolutely, this kid is the stellar qualities, all what you're asking for. 75 percentile nationwide in fencing, that's what my kids do, they can't do it. Right now, at this age, they, they don't get there. We are in Santa Barbara. They're doing well. They are rated, they are not ranked yet. And that's a very different story. State competitions don't exist, I mean, they are in state. Regional competitions actually are Hawaii, Nevada, and California joined together for fencing. It's a very difference. So we are applying the same criteria of the ranking and all for all sports. It's so different, and I, you know, try and do it, good luck. I, I think it's really hard. So if the coaches were the ones to say it works, and they have insurances and they have everything they need, then probably we should take that into account. But I do appreciate that we're working on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have now concluded public comment. Is there anyone who submitted a slip who has not spoken yet? Okay, so thank you very much. And now we will take comments and discussion from the board. And some, I'm optimistic that some of the questions and concerns that were raised by the speakers will be addressed now during our comments and discussion. So Ms. Parker?
All right. First of all, I want to thank all the members of the public that weighed in on this, and I want to apologize, because this is one where I'm sure we were all deluged with emails and contacts on it, and I personally was just not able to get to every single one. I got to as many as I could, and so I hope the public understands on that, because this was a really hot topic. Excuse me. It did come to us, and, and I don't know if you brought it up again this time, obviously it came up at previous meetings, it did come to us originally out of our junior high school administrators and coordinators, people that were running the program in terms of some of the issues that they'd seen and some of the concerns that were raised. And we did hear from junior high teachers on this as well and junior high administrators, so I appreciate their input too. After, I'm just going to run through your first page, which has the numbers one through four, and that doesn't actually tie into how they're laid out in the, in the AR, but I'll try to refer to what it looks like in the AR when I get back to it.
Would you like Dave to put that piece up?
Sure, that would be fine.
Because my revised, the one that I'm actually recommending tonight is that.
Is the AR, 61.
Excuse, excuse me, is the, the criteria.
These four criteria.
Those four criteria with that, that second one.
All right, that's fine. So even with your revisions that are up there, for me, for number one, after listening to everything and looking at our existing AR language, I actually would prefer just to keep our existing AR language on participation criteria. I don't see that as the, the biggest issue and, and sort of the reason, we already have it up there that these are exceptionally gifted athletes, it's in the original AR.
Would you, I actually thought you would ask this, I have it, if you'd like me to put it up.
Or, yeah, if you want to put that up, it's, it's fine.
And I do want to add, the reason I put that yellow there is that in looking at that, that is repeated in the AR about the portfolio. I would eliminate that in, in both.
Yeah, and that would be fine, because it is picked up in, in a, in a, down at the bottom in the application process. It's unnecessary to have it there. So it'd be fine with me to eliminate that yellow highlighted sentence, but essentially to keep the criteria at the same level. For number two, which is students shall participate in instruction, which may include competition or performance for a minimum of 10 hours each week over at least four days. That did seem high to me, and going to 20 hours over two weeks also seems high to me, but what we had before was actually too low. It's less than what our high school students are getting anyway, whether they're on the traditional schedule or on the block schedule. A block schedule, students getting 15 hours over two weeks of, of physical activity in a PE class. And to me, this was the big, this is what ISPE is about. This is about for students that need the time, that, that really, they, they need the time, that, that sixth period would otherwise be taken up by PE. They need that to do their homework. They need it to get their other activities done, because they are spending so much time on athletics. And so this is the piece to me that it did need to increase. I thought 20 hours was perhaps too much, and that maybe 15 hours, which is closer to what the, 15 hours over two weeks, which is what is happening at San Marcos if you're on the block, anyway, that, that... I thought 20 hours was perhaps too much, and that maybe 15 hours, which is closer to what the, 15 hours over two weeks, which is what is happening at San Marcos if you're on the block. Anyway, that's kind of what I'm thinking, but I'm certainly open to hearing what other board members have to say about that. And then for numbers three, which is students shall not be enrolled in an additional elective course to replace the regular physical education class. That makes sense to me. I mean, I know that there are parents and students that have thought, well, if I have this extra class, then I can fill it up with an extra elective. There are costs to the district to do that, and it also, you're getting credit, you're getting academic credit for the ISPE class. So the purpose is really to free up the student to have time to complete out-of-class assignments and not to fill it up with another class. And then number four, I have no problem with at all that students in 11th and 12th grades could enroll in ISPEs and elective if they meet the criteria.
May I comment on that just a second? The actually, thank you. Numbers three and four, four was already in the guidelines, and the reason I've put it here is so that it also will appear in the AR. There's a packet that's currently on our website that has a whole, it's like seven or eight pages, and the guidelines are in there that's kind of like a list of things that students need to do. That's always been on there, so it's always been a part of our program. But again, I wanted it in the AR. Number three was not written anywhere, but it has been practiced. This year, there are absolutely no students in the junior high levels. I didn't have time to check with all the ADs, but all the junior highs assured me there is not one student who's taking an extra elective. That is something that was supposed to be in place, but at one point, it wasn't. It was almost a recruitment to, you know, get students to that point, but everything you said about that is true. So those were things I wanted in the AR, so they're written and very clear, regardless of what the other criteria is.
Thank you. Ms. Parker? Other comments? Ms. Lamone?
I'm actually okay with all of Board Member Parker's recommendations, and I do want to clarify something. I know that I had asked about if it's possible to charge a fee, and it's not possible. So I want to, I want the public to know that that question has been addressed. We're not legally allowed to charge a fee for this. I also want to acknowledge that I think for all of us to remember that there is a process for exceptions. And clearly, from what we've heard today, there will probably be exceptions. And I think we've heard from Mrs. Sowasky as well that in her past experience, there has been exceptions. I think that one thing that this policy does is it gives us a baseline of where to work from, but I feel that the community's input has been so important in us thinking through this process, and I want to acknowledge that we did have a lot of feedback, and I, like Mrs. Parker, did not have a chance to respond to every email I got, and I apologize for that. But because all of the information was so different that we got, I don't actually know we can incorporate this in the policy. So I want to acknowledge that there is a process for exceptions. And on the piece of a stipend, you know, one of the comments that I got via email was probably one that I'm still really troubled with, which was a coach that said that he signed every form that came his way despite whether or not the student real, he really felt the student qualified. And so unfortunately, I think that counters some of what we've heard, and what this will do is it'll help us make sure that we don't have that. I think the coach didn't do it to cheat the system. I genuinely think, from what it sounded like, it was more of a, if the student's bringing it to me, the district must have approved it. So it was more of a confusion in that way, but I think that the stipend piece would be important because I think we're asking our students, our families, our parents to take some responsibility, but I want to make sure that the district also takes responsibility for doing our part, right? And so if there's going to be a stipend there, that's really important to me, that we make sure to follow this, to follow up, and to do it right. So.
Mr. Herron?
Some of my questions have been answered already. I agree with Mrs. Parker, I think 15 hours would be better than 20. I noticed in the appeal process, it goes to the principal, then to the superintendent or designee. Does it ever come back to us? So if the public is unhappy with staff, they can't appeal to us?
That's very typical in a lot of the complaint process.
I'd like to just comment, yes, we got a lot of extremely qualified correspondents. Every story just was different, and there's so many variations in this. So I'm hoping that as this thing goes forward, when you see a trend, that maybe you can come back to us with some suggestions. Maybe wording needs to be changed. But I think we're where we are today because each of us, in our own way, relate our concerns to Robin, asking questions. She has made changes in this from day one, but I would like to ask a question that one was asked. Why did we do this?
I believe we started out, there was quite a history of this, actually. The PE staff and the coordinators and athletic directors have been talking about this at least a year, probably longer. We met over a year ago, and the question about how do students qualify, there's a regular meeting that we all come together. In fact, it's scheduled for next Monday, where they, the coordinators bring the packets of the students that have applied, and we go through those together and identify which ones fit the criteria. They've done a lot of homework, and a lot of, a lot of time has been spent either going back to the parent or the student or the coach, that kind of thing. So in those discussions last year, we found that there had been, actually, there hadn't been a group meeting before then, and I called it because I wanted to know more about the program. I was just, you know, getting acquainted with everything in secondary. And so we found there was a lot of inconsistencies in the way it was applied. So Mrs. Lamone's comment about the coach just signed off, I think there were probably students on ISPE that shouldn't have, that didn't fit the criteria even then. So we were trying to tighten it up, and within those discussions, they did a lot of research on other ISPE programs and felt that it was important and that the criteria be tightened up a bit for what the program was originally intended or who it was originally intended to serve, which is the elite athlete. Doesn't have to be that way. That's just how it was started, and that's the criteria we went forward with. So to answer your question, it came from staff. It wasn't a money issue in the beginning. As we dug in a little bit further this year, and Mr. Wheeler alluded to the stipend issue, there was an MOU that was just an MOU, memorandum of understanding between the district and the teachers' union about the stipends. All of our stipends are negotiated. It was an expired MOU from 2007 that gave a breakdown for a number of students, just for junior high PE, ISPE. So that also had to be resolved. I would go forward, as I said in my memo here, not with a stipend. I would go forward with a different cost structure, regardless of how we change the criteria. It would not involve a stipend.
Does that take renegotiations with the union?
Not, if it's not a stipend, no. If, in fact, we had a situation where we had one teacher, one coordinator that did it for the whole junior high, we would select that person. That would be one section that costs $18,000 to $20,000. Could also be hourly time that is put forward at the program per site, depending on the number of students. And we would have to work out what that cost structure is, but I do not anticipate it being another stipend kind of thing. It's too hard to regulate because you have to have, the current one was zero to 10 and the same amount of money, $1,200 for each semester, and there, you know, there's schools that have two, there, you know, it just, it didn't make sense, really. So we were evaluating all, reevaluating all of that. That's how it all came forward.
I guess one comment I would make is, you know, you say, we're going to go back to what the intent was six years ago, when the program was established.
I guess, I actually don't know the date, but it's probably about then.
Many, I presume it's many years ago.
That's about right.
Yeah, and the comment was made, that times change. To go back, for the sake of going back, I guess I'm not totally sold on that.
Well, and that is what the PE teachers, you know, they helped create it, and they, to be quite honest with you, the junior high, all across the board, the athletic directors, all the administrators, and the PE teachers at the junior high, who were the coordinators, they all feel very strongly about the junior high students being in junior high PE. Another recommendation or suggestion could be a two-tiered, if you want to get into that kind of thing, where in high school, team sports that aren't offered in school could be a part of that. I threw that out there as an option to all of them. They said, that's fine. I mean, they're willing to work with whatever the board puts in place, knowing that you've had lots of conversation with parents and coaches and instructors, and as I am. I mean, we're not just saying, we need to go back to the old way and dig in, and that's it. I created the criteria based on what the program was originally founded on, and that's what you have. And it's up to you how you want the program to go forward.
And you say, was there a group that did this? You say, you say everyone is in favor of it? Is there nobody on our staff that's not in favor of it?
When, there's a, you mean with the revised criteria?
Everybody in our system in favor of this change?
When I'm speaking to everybody in the system, I'm talking about the four coordinators at junior high, the three athletic directors, and the seven principals. That's the everybody that's been in this little group talking about it. I mean, they may have talked with other folks, but that's who I'm communicating with.
Okay. Mrs. Deacon?
Well, a lot has been said, and I don't need to go back over a lot of these things. I would like to add a few things. On number three, I would love to be able to offer every single one of our students an additional elective, and unfortunately, we just can't afford that. This was designed for athletics, and so the purpose is to let students out of school early so they can go and practice. So it wasn't, I think potentially, there was a possibility of abuse, and that's not something that I think was ever envisioned. But I'm fairly happy with this new, the criteria that's presented here, and I think 15 hours is fine. I did learn a lot in the emails that I got from folks. One thing I hadn't considered really was the limitations of weather and daylight on activities like sailing, because you can have lights on a field and lights at a swimming pool, or you can be in a dance studio when daylight savings changes. But there are some sports that are just really affected by things out of the control of the individuals. So I think stretching it to two weeks also makes a big difference, and I like that. I just would like to also promote junior high PE. You know, our, most of our junior highs get out around 2:30, and so if students don't participate in PE, they're coming home 45 minutes before that, 1:45. PE is, offers cross-training. I mean, a lot of athletes really benefit from doing activities other than the one that they specialize in. So I'm not going to necessarily lobby that students have to do PE in junior high, but I would also like to make sure that people understand it has value. A lot of our health program is folded into PE. I know many, many young people who participate in athletics after school but still participate in PE. We didn't see baseball up there. We didn't see soccer up there, but there are lots and lots of students that are participating in those sports after school, and they're still participating in PE. So I want to make sure that, you know, we really recognize the value of PE and the value that our PE teachers bring. So that's something that I want everybody to keep in mind. But I'm, I'm fine with this. It sounds like if we were to go with this, team sports would be okay at the junior high level, correct? Because it no longer says individual.
We've taken out the individual. And the other difference, and I know there were a couple speakers here tonight that unfortunately had the old criteria for dance and didn't have the new, that does not have that performance and leading role, I mean, the leading role in it. So that was already gone, but it also would not pull out one sport, which I would, or activity, which I was having a hard time with. I think all of you were struggling with the individual activities and how to make it fit for all of them.
Well, and the percentages, I think, posed a big difficulty because none of us purport to be experts in every sport, and not even those individuals at our schools that are making those decisions are. So I think this makes it easier for everybody and is equally valuable.
Well, I just want to take a couple of minutes because I was on the board the last time we tackled this issue. And there were reasons why we were, why we were addressing it and why there were concerns. And one of the issues that hasn't been brought up, or, well, you touched on it, Mrs. Deacon, is that the state requires PE minutes for our students. And so, and those PE minutes, when they are achieved on campus, are taught by credentialed PE teachers who, and that was one of their concerns. They, the last time we addressed this, the PE teachers came and spoke to us directly. And their concern is that they are credentialed PE teachers. They offer more than just activity. They also offer physical education instruction. So there's that part of it. That was part of the issue. But my biggest concern, and especially, I want to echo what everybody else has said, the emails that we got were so informational and so instructional to me. And, but they, but I have to say, having read through them all, and I, too, did not get a chance to respond to everybody, I felt even more confused, really, because I still don't really know what the philosophy is behind this. Initially, I understood it to be, and when we, and six years ago, when we were discussing it, we were discussing it in the context of students who are really committed to a particular activity, whether it's a sport or dance, but to a really, an activity that they cannot accomplish if they have to be in class for the full schedule in order to take a PE class. But it wasn't just about they like this activity better than that activity, which is, I have to say, not the majority of what we heard, but there is an element of that that we heard in some of the emails. This wasn't originally thought of, and that's why I'm coming back to philosophy, because I don't know whether, I think that's bad or not. But it wasn't originally addressed as just giving students more options. It was really a student who's already committed to one very particular thing. It's something that is, you know, they have a real stake in, and that's why we were using the term elite, because there is a sense that the student, you know, it's part of their future, it's part of what they're going to be accomplishing. And our academic schedule would seriously impinge upon the student's ability to complete that goal if they had to take the PE class. But I feel like it has broadened a lot to say, okay, but if we don't offer a particular thing, then the student, and the student wants to take that, then they should be able to take that. And there's a part of me that says, well, yeah, maybe they should. But then there's another part that says, but, you know, we don't offer everything under the sun. You know, if a student wants to take a certain language class, we don't give them, you know, credit for going to a language tutor and getting that language because we don't offer it on campus. So there's parts of me that go back and forth. The person who was saying, you know, educate the whole child, you know, I think that's really what we're trying to do. But I really struggle with this because I feel like we, I don't know what the philosophy behind this is. I don't know what our philosophy is. I don't know even what the ed code philosophy is behind it in terms of why do we offer it? What are the sort of do's and don'ts? Like, why should we offer it? And what, why should we, what would be the reasons, what would not be good reasons for offering it? And then the other final thing is, we talked about money. We just voted to eliminate PSAT testing for $15,000 because we felt that our budget couldn't accommodate it. So when we talk about an additional $20,000, it's not inconsequential. It's the difference between whether we can offer testing to our students or not. So these are not minor issues. I think we're, yeah, I totally understand the desire to have students have options, and I completely agree with that. But I find, I don't see this as an easy topic because I feel like there's things that the schools can provide, and there are things that the schools, we can't provide everything. So what do we do when that happens? And... Um, and the vast majority of the, well, I shouldn't say that, I don't know that that's true, but a number of the coaches, teachers, instructors that, that students work with, um, we, I, we don't, in, as, in the ISPE, we don't govern their qualifications. Um, for the most part, they've been excellent because the students are usually at a high level, they're working with really excellent instructors, but we, but our ISPA, ISPE policy doesn't have any control over what their qualifications are, as opposed to when the students are in class, they have a credentialed teacher. So that's my concern. Um, it, I, it sounds like I'm opposing this and I'm not. Um, so I, I, but I'm raising issues because I think that they're not clear.
Well, you, your memory of this is correct. Uh, I remember the discussion very well. It wasn't to set up just an alternate PE program, uh, for those who wanted alternate activities, any more than alternate English would be spending more time in the library or, you know, doing other things. Um, it was to be for the elite athlete and we were in the throes of adopting a wellness policy at the time and physical education was one of the three legs to that wellness policy and we wanted to ensure that all students would have access to, you know, the full, I believe there are six major areas in, in the PE curriculum that, uh, that all students should have access to. Um, but there were still the exceptions and this was to be for the exception, this was to be for the student who, uh, really didn't have time in their day to get it all done.
Ms. Parker?
Um, yes, and that's why I, I really felt like ultimately it came down to what the committee and board came up with originally tied into what I think the intention was. It's not for, uh, alternative activities, it is for exceptionally gifted athletes. Um, and if they are in a non-ranked activity, then they're in advanced level courses. It's not just, you know, I, I want to try something that's not offered in the class, uh, at the school. Um, and so this ended up tying back in with it and I, and I really did feel like the one hole was the amount of time because that, that was, these are committed athletes that are spending more time and need that extra time. It's not just about, um, spending the same amount of time, it's about needing time, just the extra time.
Well, that was my concern about changing it to 15 hours instead of 20, is the, the whole point of this is supposed to be that they're spending so much time-
Right.
-that they can't complete.
Well, and the reason I went to, when I was thinking 15, which is what, it, it's over two weeks, that is, um, that is, you know, you could go to 20, but it just felt like that that was pushing it so far, um, that that was taking up the time doing the athletics instead of doing the homework, if you see what I'm saying. Um, so I felt like you, you needed to, I mean, the, the purpose of the release of the sixth period is not necessarily to have them physically active during that sixth period, but to do the work that they wouldn't have to, time to do because they're doing, um, more than our students are in a regular course. So it's trying to find the balance between that.
I understand. Ms. Deacon?
And I would just like to address the PSAT notion because I, I, I hear what you're saying. On the other hand, um, parents can pay for the PSAT or students can get the waiver, I believe through the college board is probably where that waiver comes. So, so if there's, um, diffi- hardship in paying, but on the other hand, we can't charge for this. So, so in a sense, um, they're not really equal because one, we can have funded externally and the other we can't.
Yeah, I didn't mean to imply that they were necessarily equal, just that that amount of money allows us to do something or not do something. Um, so it's not trivial. Uh, but now, I just wanted to raise the other side of the issue, um, which is, okay, because I said, I'm confused about what our philosophy is, why is it not just an alternative PE program? Why is, I mean, what's the philosophy behind it that says, it's not okay to just do it just because you want to do something different that we don't offer?
And, and I, I did look around, uh, in, in Santa Barbara and Ventura County and there, there are, um, some high school districts that do that. I really think, I mean, uh, you're, the policy, the board policy in AR, it was originally driven out of, um, a group of, um, parents and interested community members and staff and they were trying to find the balance themselves. But if we, if we opened it up, that's where I'm really concerned, that the costs would escalate. And, um, and, and so I, I don't know that this is the right time for us to, to address that as even, I'm, uh, a possibility because it, it could be so expensive. And, and this is 10,000 in the general fund, but the reality is, is that right now, we have sites paying from their site funds, so it's kind of for, for, how has like-
No.
-for example, Mr. Beckio paid for his, his-
Currently, right now, this year, it's still unrestricted funds that came from the old stipends.
So it was a stipend.
$30,000 this year or $28,000, I think.
So this, this $10,000 would actually be a, a drop in cost. It would be a $20,000 savings to the district to go to this.
Yes. Well, if the restricted criteria-
If we went to the, if we'd gone to the- If we'd gone to the very restrictive.
If we go to what's up there, it could go to 20. I, you know, I don't know, I mean-
But this is a savings to the district-
Yes.
-that we could spend on testing. Sorry.
Okay, so-
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Deacon?
Oh, I just wanted to respond to that philosophy piece because, um, to me, what is, what we're saying is we really value PE junior high, PE particularly, because by high school, most of the competitive, not all the competitive sports, but we offer an awful lot of these sports in high school already, some of them. So I think that, uh, it's really that we're trying to say, we, we value what we do in our PE classes and that we encourage students to participate in those and to, to do their extracurricular work after the school day.
Okay. Ms. Herron?
Do we have enough language that we don't need this to come back again? We-
We could make a motion.
Yeah, but do we have, to make every single word, dot the i's, cross the t's, do we have enough?
This is what-
I think we, I think we do.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure, because I would make the motion-
Yeah.
-that we approve the independent, uh, study physical education revised criterion revisions to administration regulation 6158.1 with the changes we've outlined, with the 15 hours instead of the 20 hours and with the deletion of the other portion, um, that's marked in yellow.
And the one other thing that I would ask Mr. Herron is, would you add that on the bottom in the application, um, process, um, on AR 6158.1, on page two, that it include, uh, the revisions that are, that are, uh, listed for the portfolio?
Yes, and also the deletion of that, uh, second bullet on the top of that page.
Okay, and I'm, I don't know, and part of the, it didn't, the title doesn't say the criteria. What I'm suggesting, my recommendation is, is I will work with the, work with the cost structure to come up with a cost structure that-
Yeah, and that's not in the AR.
We're just gonna, no, it's not in the AR and it's not in the title, so we're just looking at the criteria and the AR.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll second your motion.
And I believe those changes are sufficiently understood so that we've captured them already.
Okay, so does everybody understand the motion? Yes, okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. Okay, so I don't know if that's good news or bad news or what, but, um, it's at least resolved. Um, so at this point, we will break for a 15-minute break. We're about an hour behind schedule. So, um, we will need to figure out how we're going to accomplish our agenda after the break.